Okay, I'm gonna call the orders. The Swisher Council meeting for the 25th of the... Can we take roll, please?
Klein?
Here.
Heineck?
Here.
Roder?
Here.
Stagg?
Here.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Got a motion to approve and a motion is second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, let's go to public comment, number four. Anybody in the public would like to, uh, say anything to the council on anything other than what's on the agenda?
I have nobody online, but I, not as an employee, but as a person that lives here has a comment. Um, the bridge between where the road was replaced and it's like 32 foot, it kind of comes into a bow tie. Just bring it to the council's attention that it's probably gonna be a nightmare to plow and the traffic there is just, in the way the roads were ended, I know there's not much we can do, but like some of them, you hit them and as soon as the plow hits it, it's just gonna tear the pavement up. Um, all of the ends, all of the ends.
The one down by your old place.
Third Street and on, um, what road do Ponds live on?
Essex.
Essex.
Yeah, though, right where those end, like one of them drops and when you're in a small car, you ramp it. Like it's, um, so I'm just bringing that to the council's attention.
The bump won't be so bad when the road is completed. So it's more temporary situation.
We're gonna have the plow knock it down.
Yep. Yep, that's what going into winter, it's probably not gonna look like that in the spring.
I think it does bring the, to attention that we have to look at that bridge. I understand that it's still structurally okay, but it's gonna cause a lot of headaches for this council in the next couple of years, if we don't develop a plan to do that.
Uh, I got a comment too, just from some of the, uh, two or three different citizens in Swisher. Emailed me or texted me about, like at the last meeting, they must've listened to it on Zoom or heard about it or whatever about the Swisher Economics Alliance asking, making the comment that, uh, the council always acts like they wanna support the town, the businesses in Swisher and what are we doing to do it? Well, one of the, one of the comments was brought up to me from a citizen in this town was that, uh, the city is actually paying about 15,000 to 20,000 dollars a year for reserve cops for a business in Swisher that brings absolutely, probably 1% of the town, 5% of the town goes to the dance floor. So if that's not supporting it, I don't know what is. So I, I think they're just tired of hearing about that the city doesn't support the businesses in Swisher when we are doing as much as we possibly can right now. I mean, that was 20,000 dollars or whatever it cost us for, uh, reserve cops that wasn't in our budget and we all voted to do it. So that is supporting the businesses in Swisher. So that's, that's, that was the point they brought up to me. I said I'd bring it up to you guys, so, just so you know how some of the citizens in this town feel.
Um, one comment from me is regarding this, the Zooms. I've had a lot of people text me throughout the days saying that they can't get in.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
We, so Zoom updated and now Shelley creates a meeting and it, like tonight, it was disappeared. It just disappeared. It was here two hours ago when I logged on and uploaded videos and then it was just gone when I got here. So I had to join separately, um, and so sometimes it changes the meeting ID. So then I get texts too as I'm sitting here and I'm like, here's the meeting ID. So I'm not sure if it's an issue, it's an issue with Zoom for sure, um, because they updated their whole platform and it's kind of a pain to use now. Um, but that's what keeps happening. So we just need to figure out how to keep the meetings or create a new meeting every time because...
Would it be better if you created the meeting?
We use the same account, so it doesn't matter who creates it. It's just disappearing, like it's just canceling our recurring meetings. So we just need to get together and figure out a better way to do it.
And just let the public know that they have to pay attention to the agenda and what the meeting ID and code is because that's just, that's just it. When I was ready to send the link to the council members, right, on Friday, I go in there to grab the link for Zoom.
And it was gone.
The meeting's gone. There's no meeting for tonight.
Yes.
So I had to create a new meeting. I used the same, I think I used the same passcode, but the meeting ID is, it creates a totally, it brings, yeah, it creates its own.
So then when I get the agenda, I then make a post on Facebook saying, use this ID in this passcode. But then like tonight, I mean, it worked because there's somebody on here. But, um, I had to join the meeting as if I'm not recording it.
Okay.
And I'm still recording it, but as a, not as a person running the meeting, as a participant. So there's something weird going on that we just need to figure out, get with Zoom and figure out what's going on.
Yeah, 'cause the last couple of meetings, I've had people text me during the meeting.
Yeah, me too.
Now, I got a question for you. How, how soon do, like say the minutes from this meeting, how soon are they out to the public?
As soon as they're approved at the next meeting.
See, that's, that's the problem that some people have brought up, that they, they don't know about what's coming up at the last meeting till like right before the next meeting. Like we're not even getting them till like the Friday before. Like if they wanna know, like all of a sudden at this meeting, the minutes where that we're gonna vote on this or we're gonna discuss this at the next one, they're not even finding out about it till like right before. So it's kind of like, like if we have a meeting tonight, I mean, it should basically by Thursday, I would think the city would know what was discussed and everything.
Yeah, and I find however you guys wanna do that, that's just the way that, um, I was trained to do it. But I can change that if you guys are okay with that.
Who trained you to do that? Cause we used to get them like when county was here, it was like two days afterwards, we have the minutes.
Um, the...
Or not county, or what was it?
Julie.
What was it?
Tanya.
Tanya, I'm sorry.
So it was, I, I replaced, um, Ju, I took Julie's position. So I was, I was minimally shown for like 30 minutes.
Because the public shouldn't have minutes unless they're approved.
Yeah.
Now there is a version that gets published in the Gazette. Um, you know, what, we have to have them published. Well, we have to, now it's changed. We had to have them published within 15 days of the meeting. So those are out there in, you know, on the Gazette website. And then now there also is a website that all newspaper must publish. And I, I don't remember, I just learned this last Thursday. It's like iowapublications.com. Um, so they're out there that way, but until the council actually approves minutes, so that way, you know, could there be a change to minutes? There could, very well could be.
What's it take to approve them?
The council's approval.
You gotta hold this and have a meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
So every two, so basically...
It used to be like it'd release like two days later and now it's like two weeks.
Yeah.
How does anybody in town supposed to know what's coming up at the next meeting unless they check like on Saturday or Sunday?
Well, the agenda would tell them.
The agenda tells them.
Yeah, but they don't get that until...
The Thursday before or Friday before.
Friday before.
Friday before the meeting, I mean, that's, that's giving them like two days.
Plus the packet is out there on the website.
It's giving us two days. I have an agenda on Friday and then by, it's our, it's our duty to read it by Monday.
No, but the, I'm talking about the minutes, say like something was discussed at this meeting and somebody has, say somebody in town's got a problem with it and they wanna bring it up do it at the next meeting, you know, or whatever, they say that we're gonna discuss it. Shouldn't they know ahead of time, like what's gonna be? It, it just, I don't, I don't care. It doesn't matter. I'm just saying people are, it seems like it should have more than two days.
They could show up to the meeting.
I agree with you. Shelley, is that...
Shelley, that's not gonna happen. You can keep talking like that, but it's not gonna happen, Shelley.
Is the timeline?
People's not coming to meetings.
Is the approval of the minutes, is that something that's like a code for pu, for public hearings? Or is it just something that has been done? Because I mean, you guys could change it.
Exactly.
So, and then I'm fine with whatever you guys wanna do.
The best, in my opinion. But that's just...
We don't have to discuss it.
Didn't, didn't we before, didn't?
We can put this on a future agenda if you want to.
Yeah, I was just saying, have a future agenda if we're gonna keep discussing it.
Yeah, this is, I mean, you're taking a lot of time just to discuss.
We can't discuss it.
Well, I, I keep thinking there was another way that this was done. Previously was, was the mayor was the one that approved wherever the minutes were and signed them.
No, the council approves minutes. So, I mean...
Cause I, cause I keep remembering that when I had to sign something after the minutes were done until I was here.
We can talk about it later. Yeah.
So I'm curious where that went.
Because the clerk takes the minutes. So the person that officially signs minutes is the person that takes minutes. And that's why...
Why did she have?
I, I can't speak to that.
The mayor sign it?
That's up, that, that's up to each clerk individually, I guess.
Something we need to look back and see how that was done, 'cause I'm curious for that too. Okay, any other comments for council at this time? Okay, we're gonna move on then. Uh, can I get approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
I got, uh, approval moved and seconded. All those, well, let's do a roll.
Okay. Klein?
Aye.
Heineck?
Aye.
Pujol?
Aye.
Roder?
Aye.
Stagg?
Aye.
Okay. Let's move on to item six. Consideration of a Resolution 75 2024 approving amendment number four to the HRP and Contract for Engineering Services for Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project.
Motion to approve Resolution 75 2024, second.
I got a motion to approve Resolution second made.
So what's happened on this exactly?
I asked you to put this first on the agenda ahead of everything else that's coming up because once you understand this, the rest of it shouldn't make more sense. But about three, four months ago, county informed us that they decided that they didn't want to reimburse the city for the time one of our inspectors spent in 2019, 2020. Um, after a lot of debate, a lot of discussion whether it should go to court and things like that, uh, we made a decision, 'cause our contracts actually, you guys have paid us for that time. We decided, no matter how much we wanted to, to teach the county perhaps, so let's, your fault, um, that with everything else you guys have going on and stuff like that, we decided to just go ahead and reimburse like for like. So we're reimbursing you the engineering fees that they weren't willing to, the county reimbursed to you. What we're doing is giving you a credit on the sewer project. We're basically taking the total, uh, contract amount on the sewer project and dropping it by 30,027.58. You'll see this throughout the other, uh, items you're doing as disputed engineering fees. And that's what this is. So what we're doing is making you guys whole, this will try to, okay?
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, I got a motion on the table and a second. Let's have a roll.
Klein?
Aye.
Heineck?
Aye.
Pujol?
Aye.
Roder?
Aye.
Stagg?
Aye.
Okay, let's go to number seven, Johnson County Secondary Roads Department invoice. Review the invoice from Johnson County Secondary Roads. The construction costs and approved, approved payment.
Good question here. Before we get each one of those, and I, they're all, they're all intertwined, but I went through, and I can, with the net cost to the town, about 141,000 dollars. Does that sound about right? 141,864.90?
Um, that was...
I, I picked, uh, now these two payments, there was a pick?
I think, are you combining the 121 plus the 30,000 to get to 141? Because we're just reimbursing you the 30,000. That's what you just voted, huh?
Yeah.
So in the end, it's gonna end up costing you 100. We're getting way ahead here, Daryl, but, yeah.
Well, I just, what, what is gonna cost us? And I think it comes up to 140, I, I think I took that 30,000 and, uh, 'cause the reason I'd done that, because these all, you can lose track of the dollar amount. What I done, I just wouldn't, how much, how much we pay the county, how much they pay us, and I come up with, with a net, I just wanna know if I come up right.
I think that the 121, I guess I never added it up quite that way, Daryl. Um, you're gonna pay them in theory this 225,000 that actually honestly you've already approved it once when you approved the pay requests as the project went on. However, Tanya just withheld it. So this is more of just a confirmation of what you've already done, okay? Or the council's before you already did. Then after that, the, you're invoicing the county for the city engineer, or for the, the construction and the design engineering less 30,000 dollars, okay? All right, and that's 204,000 whatever, okay?
Yep, that's how much, uh, they, they reimburse us for, 204,475.11.
Correct, yes. And then what you're gonna, then what they've done is also, uh, invoiced you for 121,000 for the annexation, okay? So without sitting here and doing the math, you, you could be right because the annexation...
He is.
Yeah.
He took the 225 minus 204, that's around 20,000. Adding that on to the 121, that's up, that's where our 141,000 is. But it's two separate, really it's two separate situations.
I, I know, but I just put it a total now.
You're just trying to figure out the total, man.
I wanted to bring up, so I, I'm looking. Uh, these, these, and I, I'm probably getting ahead of you here and I couldn't just shut me down, but, uh, there's papers number seven and eight, that looks like that was something we owed back several years ago. We never paid it, is that correct? Or am I, am I ahead of?
Number seven?
Yeah, number seven.
Yeah. As the project went on, there were pay requests that came before the council, okay? Once a month or whenever they got processed, okay? The council approved the payment to the county for their portion of that, okay? Tanya, on two of those invoices, she withheld what she thought the engineering fees were going to add up to. And she actually got pretty darn close, truthfully, because she didn't trust the county. Um, and so that's what she did. She withheld construction payments to do that.
What did they say about that, a home, or home back on?
They didn't say anything till now, so several years later, yeah.
Four years later, you're making a beat five.
Right, and so they say, you know, you had, uh, you owed them this money in construction payments, which technically you did. But again, the council had approved all those payments. Tanya took it upon herself to hold back this money.
With the council's approval.
I don't know.
So she basically held it like retainage.
Well, the council still would've had to approve the payment, whether or not, you said I withhold it.
It, it did.
They withheld through, it's by the council.
It did go through council.
So why did council approve that?
But you didn't, you approved the payments, you didn't approve the withholding.
Yeah.
Right, but it's shit.
We didn't approve the withholding of them.
But we still, what they had to approve the exact amount getting paid?
Yeah, sure they did.
But that's what we thought you were sending in.
Oh, then we still...
But she didn't cut the check for that.
Right, so that's where we are now, four years later.
She basically did what's called a retainage on a big project, long enough without it having, being written, which is a percentage held on the backend to make sure everything is completed and I's are dotted and T's are crossed.
She, you know, had some forethought that this, what's going on now was going to happen, yeah.
So, so that's, that's kind of where we're at now, is these items that are on the agenda is to clean this up, to go ahead and make those checks to the county.
So now, maybe I'm wrong on this, but I've, I've been, keep hearing about, we don't know how much TIF money we're gonna get until we get the answers back from the county, right, off the, that's a true, right?
This is, you know...
Oh, so this, this has, so what, why do we keep prolonging everything with the TIF money off that, off, or the, off the, maybe it wasn't the TIF money, maybe I'm just...
Oh, this is the bond.
Yeah, the bond, but yeah.
Because we didn't know the exact dollar amounts for the invoices, correct?
Correct, yeah.
But this is also the same money that we have to have spent by July, right?
Yes.
Part of it, yeah.
Do we have a certain dollar amount that we know that we have to?
Has all of this, right?
Yes, that's what we're doing right now.
Okay.
We couldn't, we couldn't finalize the construction engineering until the books were done and cleaned up for the actual construction itself, because those engineering fees were based on the percent of the work done for the city.
Right.
And the percent of the work done for the county.
Yeah, I was just getting mixed up with TIF and bond money. I, I just, no, we've been talking about the, we needed to know how much we were gonna have left over on that bond.
So depending on how votes go in the coming steps, you'll have a dollar amount of what's remaining?
There's 396,000 dollars in that fund right now.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll spend, we'll, 141,000 dollars out of it. But it just depends on when we get our money back from county.
They passed, once.
Right, 'cause I'm cutting the check for 225 plus 121.
Yeah.
But then the county's gotta reimburse this 204 and...
Which is, I amend...
I don't know how long this is.
Yes, I amend.
Clean their books up too.
What's that, uh?
County will wanna clean their books up by the end of the year if we get it off right away.
I hope so.
Can we just shorten it a bit?
So number seven needs no action, correct?
Yeah, it does. I, I would like it just because this is a whole new council.
Okay, number seven is for review of this, yes?
And approve the payment.
And approve.
Motion to approve payment.
Second.
Got a motion to approve payment in a second. Let's have a roll.
Heineck?
Aye.
Pujol?
Aye.
Roder?
Aye.
Stagg?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Okay, now let's go to item eight. Is the invoice to Johnson County Secondary Roads Department.
Motion to approve submitting an invoice to Johnson County for 204,475.11.
Second.
And a motion to approve...
I got a question for you.
Yeah.
The invoice sent to Johnson County.
This is addressed to Johnson, Assistant Johnson County Engineer, this is Lynn County Secondary Road.
I'm sorry.
Okay, let me make sure we, we're dealing with Lynn County.
That address is right though.
A table there.
Yeah, sorry. It hasn't been sent yet, so thank you.
Yeah, that might be a bull in.
One of the chicks are, you don't look at the heading, do they?
Okay, I got a motion to approve submitting the invoice to Johnson County Secondary Roads for 204,475.11 in a second. Let's have a roll.
Are you gonna have a roll on everything?
Day in here.
Okay, I just, I'm, I'm just wondering. Pujol?
Aye.
Cause I'm not prepared for these, as you can tell. Roder?
Aye.
Stagg?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Heineck?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, going, going to nine, Johnson County Secondary Roads Department invoice. This is to review the invoice from Johnson County Secondary Road for 121,056.54 for reimbursement of construction costs related to Deegan Sheely properties to be annexed and approved payment from Fund 330 Division Street Project. So that's the end, that'll be all. Okay.
So that I send them in, that's what it costs the city?
For reimbursement?
Right, 'cause that's, that's us reimbursing the county for what the work was done out on that section of road in order to help.
It's actually 60%.
Right, 60%.
Yeah. Motion to approve. Request for voluntary annexation.
The payment.
The payment.
Okay.
Oh yeah, we're on nine, that's the nine.
Right, okay, okay.
Yeah, we're on nine.
So this is already a done deal or is this, we're voting to actually annex them in or, or this is a vote?
No, this, what this is for is for us out on that end of Division Street. When we talked about that there was, be a percentage that we have to reimburse the county for, for the work done out there in order to move forward with any annexations in that area.
I think I understand what you're saying. You're saying you should approve the annexations before you approve the payment to the county.
Yeah.
Exactly. So could you just table this until you approve the next two items and act to...
We could've, I guess, if you approved the agenda the way it was, we could've made that change prior if at the time the agenda was approved. So just, I mean, if you don't wanna approve the payment, then don't approve the payment. And then you also won't approve the next two items on the agenda, but that's, that's how, that's why the approval of the agenda is on the agenda for any structure changes.
Yeah, be, 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 I'm counting, I guess I didn't know exactly where the, where all the annexation was and I, uh... There you go.
A motion? I do have a motion on, on the floor.
Second.
And I have a second to approve the reimbursement for the construction costs related to the properties out there for, for Division Street Project.
So could, could you amend the motion to say contingent on our rule of the next two items?
Yeah.
Sure.
We could, yeah, so we'll amend it, um, based off approval of next two line items. If not passed, then...
Second.
Okay, we got a motion amended, seconded. Let's do a roll.
Sure. Roder?
Aye.
Stagg?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Heineck?
May.
No, you're, you're...
I can do it, it's...
Oh, I thought you, okay, I thought this was...
Pujol?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now, item 10.
Still can do all this too.
Resolution 32 2024, consideration to approve a request for voluntary annexation from Brad and Sandy Deegan for property located on 120th Street Northwest Swisher. Iowa parcel ID number 0305452005 consisting of 12.58 acres.
Motion to approve Resolution 32 2024.
I have a motion to approve Resolution 32 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? Discussion. Discussion.
My discussion, I'll start it off, is how is the city, how long do you think it's the, if it's gonna cost us 121,000 dollars, I know you guys are gonna say, uh, there's gonna be houses out there and taxes and everything and that we're gonna bring in, 'cause since there'll be annex in the Swisher, we'll get the tax money, but how long would it ever take to rebuild that 121,000? Plus like now if we annex that land in, then the city, if, if I'm thinking right, the city is, will be responsible for all of the maintenance on the roads and everything else, I know. So in my opinion, I don't know...
On what level?
You already, you already do maintain them.
Where?
With the agreement, with Johnson County.
If they annex that in, there's gonna be a lot more, and build houses, there'll be a lot more roads, right?
Interior roads.
Interior roads.
Not necessarily. They could be private drives, I don't, I don't know.
I know you don't know, Shelley, that's why you shouldn't be answering. I'm saying, there's, there's roads, there's gonna, if, if Dave or Brad or whoever develops that land out there and puts 30 or 40 houses on there, there's gonna be a lot more roads that we're gonna be maintaining. There's also gonna be a lot more roads up here that we're gonna be maintaining.
Which, which any...
And, and I know we're getting the tax money, I, I get all that, I get...
Any, any new development, you're gonna have that in this town.
Exactly, exactly, but you're also gonna have more cost money.
Yes, that's true.
Right. You're gonna have more cost down the road. I'm not saying, I'm not gonna say it's not gonna be a plus to Swisher with the tax money and everything, but everybody's gotta know, it's not like, okay, we're gonna get, bring in 300,000 dollars in tax every year from these houses out here. We're gonna have a lot of cost to it too. I'm just saying, I don't know if it's, I mean, we're already gonna spend 121,000 and then you're gonna have, also gonna have other money that's gonna come out of the Swisher budget. And we might, and we might be plowing roads when there's, they might have 10 roads in there and three houses. You don't know if they're gonna sell. You don't know how fast they're gonna sell or whatever. You don't know how fast you're gonna get property tax money, but...
Regardless whether or not they sell, we're still getting property tax money, aren't we?
Yeah. We start getting the tax revenue off of the land as it sits. Yeah, but that's nothing compared to what it is when there's houses there. Correct. But you don't, the city doesn't, it doesn't cost the city to maintain a bare lot.
Yeah, we're not, if there's no houses in there, we're not gonna be in there plowing a thing.
I'm just saying, they could put houses, they could put streets and everything in there and the houses not sell right away. It might be 10, 15 years before all of us, so I don't, I'm not saying that's gonna happen. But you know as well as I do, we're all living up in a development up there where there's three lots that haven't sold in 20 years. Correct. I mean, it could happen, I mean, we, we don't know how fast houses...
And that's the risk of the developer.
That could happen right up here now.
That's the risk of us too, if there are roads up there, we're maintaining them.
It could happen in the development of your.
Exactly.
A point with the, the road instruction, there is an east and a west end number of feet that were relevant to annexation repayment. With that road repair, that serviced the whole community, coming into town and out of town. So it isn't just like you're supporting two entities out there asking for annexation. That road repair serviced the whole community.
Which far are you, which, which road, uh, I mean, this one, uh.
Hundred and twentieth street.
Yeah.
There was a section on the east end of about twenty-five hundred feet, and a section of about the same amount on the west end.
On the north, on the north, north side of the road, right?
It was part of the hundred and twentieth street project that reflected annexation repayment.
But that's something, that, as far as the repayment, did we have to make that? I thought that was just, we had to do it if we wanted to annex, cause we had to have joining property, if I understood it right.
Right, you're, you're required to.
To have joining properties.
If, yeah, if you wanna repay, if you want to, what you're paying for is the part of the road that's directly in front of the annexation.
Which is the north, uh, or the, the north half.
Look figure.
We paid for the south half.
Right, county's portion was the north half.
Mm-hmm.
I believe this was in a previous recording, we might need to look back, but I believe when Brad had come, he had said only one house was being built on the twelve acres.
Correct.
Yes, so there wouldn't be roads or, at least from that.
Sheely's, you can argue it's gonna be developed.
At some point.
Has he discussed even remotely how many potential lots? Has he discussed how many potential lots?
No, he put the brakes on any future development plans until annexation got approved.
Dave would know, Dave's gonna sell it to a developer.
Motion, second to approve.
Any other discussion here?
So is it actually feasible to approve annexation of one but not the other?
Right now.
Does that change the value amount of the thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, a little bit.
So just discussing Deegans. One house is built there, that doesn't increase any maintenance for us. Any more discussion?
Any more discussion?
Oh, I got one question on this. Uh, Senator there. It says, uh, publicly was published April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, and the public hearing was held May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Twenty, it should be twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-four, yeah.
That'll be on both of them then, Darren, thank you.
Before we, can I get, I hate to get in the middle of this, but I, before I get to two for it, have we approved the, uh, what is, yeah, this right here? That a hundred and twenty-one thousand, have we, we haven't got some, we, we do nine already?
We're on nine. So it's, it's approved pending the passage of ten and eleven.
Well, one quick, yeah.
Ten and eleven do not pass, nine does not get paid.
Okay, I had it on, uh, do we have to do a resolution to pay that?
Are we on ten? On ten, that's what I thought, yeah, we're on ten, okay, nine already passed.
Okay, but, yeah, let me, let me save it there.
Pending.
Yeah, pending, yes.
Uh, passage of an ordinance, amendment, or resolution requires a majority vote of all members of the council. Passage of a motion requires a majority vote of a quorum of the council. A resolution must be passed to spend public funds in excess of one hundred thousand dollars on a public improvement project or to accept public improvements and facilities upon their completion. Each council member's vote on a measure must be recorded. A measure that fails to receive sufficient votes or for passage shall be considered defeated.
That, the resolution part, I mean, you, you just got a motion, we didn't do a resolution, did we?
That's correct.
Right.
We didn't, we just got a motion, right?
Correct.
Okay. I'd be a stickler, but I, this, this comes out of our responsibility as a, as a, in a council, I just don't.
I sure wish you would've called me in advance, I could've switched, I mean, I could've made an amendment and had the council approve it at that point.
I just, I just, I just dug that up tonight before I came here.
Okay.
But, uh.
Yeah, I didn't know that that was in the plan.
So that, that's the code, the code, we got too mu, too much code, but anyway.
So, yeah, it'll have to wait then, I guess.
Well, that's.
Well, apparently number nine should've been a resolution.
Nine and nine.
Unless you want to protect our high ends a little bit.
Johnson County Secondary Roads.
Because it was over a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, technically, doesn't seven have to be one then too?
I don't know, seven probably was a resolution back when, when the council originally approved it, I think, so.
See, I don't know where it was.
I think it was on already approved at night.
I think as part of your twenty-eight year agreement.
Yeah.
I just wanna cover our ideas a little bit.
So probably just number nine should've been a resolution.
Okay, so number nine is not next.
Avoids ten eleven.
So no action at all?
Ten and eleven can still be passed, cause those are marked as resolutions.
Yeah.
Those can still be passed, but then you would come back on next meeting to go back and do nine. Yep. Which, if they both get.
Right, wouldn't you really want it all on the same resolution? No, okay.
Let's do ten and one right now.
Okay.
We're talking about it.
So, so ten and, so.
I agree, we should, we should move forward with what we can do on.
Ten eleven, yeah.
I'm getting confused right now, so like, and the, so like, if we're voting on number ten, and we vote aye on it, and then what if we vote nay on the number eleven?
It would change the dollar amount on nine.
On, on nine, right, and, and it still wouldn't okay the number nine.
Number nine is next.
Nine's dead.
Okay.
It's dead right now.
Until next meeting.
Okay, okay.
Gotcha, we could, yeah. Yep. So ten, there was a motion and a second, correct?
Yes. Okay.
So the Deegan parcel.
So I got a motion to approve Resolution Ten, and I got a second to approve Resolution Ten.
Resolution number thirty-two dash twenty twenty-four.
Thirty-two dash twenty four.
Right.
Number item ten, excuse me. Okay, any other discussion?
And that's the twelve point five acres that Brad sold.
Yes. Example.
Heenick.
May, not, I've explained.
Let, let me, let's finish roll. Pujol.
Aye.
Roder.
Aye.
Stagg.
Aye.
Klein.
No.
Okay, what a, item eleven. Resolution thirty-three dash twenty twenty-four, consideration of approving a request for voluntary annexation from David Sheely. The property located on one hundred twentieth Street Northwest Swisher, Iowa parcel ID three oh five four five two zero zero three consisting of forty-one point nine acres.
Motion to approve Resolution Thirty-three Twenty Twenty Four.
Second.
Yeah, a motion to approve, and a second, and conversation. Yeah.
The established one concern about this, this was brought up a few years ago, I don't know, are you representing them to? The access to main part of the property in fact is not wide enough to get a city street through. Um, that was the, one of the main issues back then, so I don't know if you think that, or if you know, I guess, whether Deegan and Sheely would work together to accommodate that or, or not, but that, that's one thing that had been brought up ninety-five years ago now, so.
To my knowledge, there was a, an easement agreement between those two parties. And the details of it, I do not have, it was a verbal that was given to me. And if there needs to be a specific, uh, width for all parties, I don't have that dimension.
Yeah, if it's gonna be a city street, I think it's an amount of sixty feet.
Okay.
And that, even, even with a verbal agreement, that would change, like, say, like, uh, say like Brad does sell it to somebody else, I mean, it'd have to be more than a verbal agreement for, for, you know what I'm saying, like, say, just.
Would get documented.
Right, it'd have to be, like, legal, like, like if Brad's property right now is gonna have an easement through it, he's gonna have to.
When the abstract would get updated, that verbiage would be in part on both abstracts.
Okay, right.
Was that recent?
Thank you, thank you for that.
Was that recent, the conversations on that?
Goodness, it was, it was before the pandemic.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it was.
Cause I think I remember hearing something about the easement.
Yeah, perhaps.
Is that something that would hold this up as far as council moves though? With this annexation, if we do not know whether or not there's an actual easement agreement?
I don't think it would, might, because you can annex it, but what kind of development they can do to that property would be impacted. But as far as actually bringing the property into the city, I don't think that necessarily matters. It, it just would be, you'd have to consider whether it's worth bringing it to the city.
Which is what we're doing tonight.
I guess in my mind, though, I'm trying to think if, if there is no easement agreement between the two properties. And how would he have access?
Legally, there has to be something somewhere on, you can't let a property and not let an owner get to that property.
I mean, there is access, it's like a fly pole on, okay?
Correct.
It's just the pole of the fly pole is too narrow, I mean, they could just do a driveway back there if they wanted to. Um, it just be a.
Yeah, but for a city street.
As far as development, if we're looking to develop that property and have a city street go through there, then that, the city would have to.
Pay for it.
Well, we'd have, there would have to be easements involved for, for the size of the street, they would have to go up there.
They, they could have a private drive if, if all of its built, they could do that, so you would have no maintenance on that, nothing. You know, I'd like assets.
Okay. That's.
Zero out one, one sister.
Oh, yeah.
That should, that should be private.
If you get too narrow, then you got the fire department getting involved, and they're gonna require.
This is, this is.
You know that, don't you?
Well, even if it's a private drive, they're gonna have, if, if they may, may turn it into a private drive to get back to that development, or say it is a development, it'd be, fire department would have a problem with, with a narrow street.
But there wouldn't be part in there, right, or anything like that, probably.
Shelley, did you see there's the same air on Resolution Eleven?
I, I didn't catch what you said.
There's the same air on the dates.
Correct, yeah, I noted that.
Any other discussion? No other discussion? Okay, and then a motion to approve Resolution Thirty-three Twenty Twenty Four in a second. Let's have a roll.
Pujol.
Aye.
Roder.
Aye.
Stagg.
Aye.
Klein.
No.
Heenick.
May.
Okay. Let's move on to number twelve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. This is just for a short stint, right?
No.
November twenty twenty-five.
The whole, the whole four dollars and some odd cents.
Per day.
Per day.
That's not, you could do that. I already told you now. We're like, no chance. Simple and easy. Just ask for, call it, vote. All right, here.
Let's have a roll.
Oh, okay.
See you, Tim.
Yes.
Thanks.
Stagg.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Heenick.
Aye.
Pujol.
Aye.
Roder.
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to thirteen, Mayor vacancy appointment notice. This is to approve a notice to, of intent to fill a vacancy by appointment on the December ninth, twenty twenty-four council meeting, so.
Are we gonna have to put this on every single agenda?
We're, we're gonna post it again. Put it out there and look for names to come in.
Cause we got so many last time?
Lot, two times.
Yeah.
I just don't see it happening.
And Shelley's saying we're gonna have to have a special election now.
I didn't say you'll have to, if it doesn't be filled within like sixty days of the.
I think if, if by chance we have a, a, what do they call this, these?
Petition.
Petition to do a special election, then we probably'd have to. But hopefully, within the next.
So if we don't get an appointment in the next sixty days, what, what good would a special election do us if nobody's, if nobody runs?
That's what, that's what we've said all along, that's why we're saying, we don't wanna do a special election.
Like, are we required to do it?
That's what I'm asking, are we required to?
We are required to.
How much, how much election cost? Somebody said one time about a couple thousand?
Three, five.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Good question.
It was like, no. Fifteen hundred, I thought.
I'd say you'd like this, fifty hundred dollars, and then you protest.
That's a problem, profit said the code that we can't.
Can't keep going? Okay, is there a limit?
Appointment to fill a vacancy must be made within sixty days of the date of the vacancy occurred.
And.
Can't we have, as a council, just appoint Mike Mayor then?
He's gonna, gonna.
I mean, seriously, if maybe Mike would have to do it as Mayor Pro Town anyway.
I accept it, he can decline it.
He can decline it.
Well, then we'll make him be, Mayor Pro Town, just changing the title. Like, so what happens after sixty days, you say we have to have a special election? We have, nobody, nobody takes it then either, then where, then where are we at? Back to Mayor Pro Town?
There's questions for, yeah.
No, cause if it'd be write-ins and someone could get it, I think.
They still have to.
If they have to accept it. And we'd have to prove it.
I think at this point.
You wouldn't approve.
No, not a special election, you don't know.
Not if it's an election.
I think at this point though, but they do have to accept it, we're, we're inside that time allotment, it's out there. And since we had this notice sent out previously, I think, I think to resubmit a notice at this point, and we'll see what names may come forward, if any.
So I had called the county elections office and asked if, you know, between the last time it was published and nobody came forward, would a new notice need to be published, and I was informed, yes. You must publish and no, and no action could be taken tonight, because you have to give the public again the same notice.
So let's be in hypotheticals, nobody comes forward, we hit our sixty days, and we have to go to a special election, right?
Somebody has come forward.
Yeah, let's see, this is things I don't know. Okay, so that changes everything.
Yeah.
Cause this just goes till next November, right? All right.
Yeah.
All right, motion to, do we already make a motion on this?
No.
Motion to approve notice of the ten.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion to adjourn, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Six seventy-four.